Good evening and welcome to the Planning and Zoning Board Meeting for the City of Smyrna. Today is March 14th, 2016 at 6:00 PM and this meeting's called to order. At this time, we'd like to ask that all electronic devices be turned off as they interfere with our recording equipment. For those of you joining us for the first time, this meeting's conducted much like a council meeting. As such, each application will include a presentation from city staff, followed by a question and answer session between staff and the board. Following staff's presentation, we'll have the applicant present their case and answer any questions. Once all the questions have been satisfied, we'll have an opportunity for anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to the application. We do ask for you to come forward one at a time, sign the sign-in sheet at the podium, and please direct all your comments to the board. We've got a couple of items that we're gonna table, or we're gonna attempt to table, and then we'll get into the two items that are on our agenda tonight. The first item is Z15-003. This is to be tabled to the April 11th, 2016 P&amp;Z meeting at the request of staff. Can we get a motion, please? Need a motion to table it to April 11th, 2016, please.
Chairman, make a motion to table this to the next April 11th meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. A second. All in favor? All right. We good? We got a second? All in favor? Please vote. If you're opposed, please vote. Mr. Campo? The motion to table to April 11th is approved, 7-0. All right. The next item on our agenda, you guys are gonna forgive us a little bit, we've got some new folks up here, and then we had a meeting last month, but we were in a different arena, and we didn't have all the technology that we have in here today. So, it may take us a couple minutes, but we'll get the bugs worked out and move quickly. Z16-002, this is to be tabled to the April 11th, 2016 P&amp;Z meeting at the request of the applicant. Can we get a motion, please? Motion, Mr. Monroe? Second? Second, Mr. Roberts? All in favor? It's approved, 7-0. All right. The next item on our agenda is 2016-116. This is the approval of a subdivision plat for two residential lots in the R15 zoning district. This is 1.08 acres, land lot 524, 3154 Dunn Street, the applicant's John Bradford. Mr. Martin? Background, please. I'm sorry. Mr. Staubes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is subject property at 3154 Dunn Street, applicant's John Bradford. You'll hear it tonight, and your recommendation will go to Mayor and Council on April 4th. So, this is, property is zoned R15, it's 1.08 acres. It is surrounded by R20 zoning to the east and south, and some property to the south and west is R15 zoning also. To the west of the rear line is the Brinkley Park and the American Legion. There's, this is the only 150-foot wide lot left in this, what was called the Timmerman subdivision, and the other 150-foot wide lot has been subdivided into four lots, which is on the side that runs with Lee Street, and that's in the R20 zoning district. So, this is the only 150-foot wide lot in that area that still exists. There's a single-family house existing on the property now. It splits what is the proposed new lot line, which I'll show you in a minute. This is the proposed lot split. We'll have a, each house will have a side entry garage. It's proposing 2,300 square foot, single-family houses, and each lot will have a width of 75 feet. The R15 zoning requires an 85-foot lot width. So, rather than splitting one lot to be 85 feet and the other one 65 feet, we are in support of this proposal, which has each lot at 75 feet wide. The depth will not change at all. Here's the, this is the proposed elevation, showing the side entry garage, even though this is on a corner, this is how it will look with the lot line running where the street This picture of the existing structure and some of the surrounding properties. We've recommended approval of the lot split with the two conditions, that approval shall be conditioned upon substantial compliance with the site plan submitted for plat approval on February 4th, 2016, and two, approval shall be conditioned upon the front elevations utilizing different building materials and colors, as well as other accents that differentiate the two homes. So, right now, it's 1.08 acres, 150-foot wide. He's proposing to split it two, and that'll be .54 acres for each lot with a 75-foot width. The total acreage exceeds what's required for R15 zoning, as far as the area goes, and there, so the density is well under what the low-density residential land use would allow, which is three units per acre. It's like 1.85 units per acre. So, the only exception that it needs is the variance for the lot width.
From 85 to 75?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Anything further?
No.
Any questions for Mr. Staubes? Okay. If the applicant's in attendance, we'd like you to come forward and tell us a little bit about your plans. Good evening.
Hello. Hello. Do you want to know about the house plans or the overall plans?
Just kind of give us your 10,000-foot view.
Okay. Yeah, basically, the 10,000-foot view is exactly what he said. Just trying to get the 85 feet down to 75 feet, split it into two lots. We plan on building two homes there, one for myself and my family, as well as my mother. She'll live next door, as much as she might not like that. The houses will be Craftsman-style houses. The 2,300 square foot will actually be a little bit more because of the elevations on the garage. We'll have some stuff above it to allow for more square footage. The house on the left, I believe, we'll be able to get a basement on that, do everything we can to try to curb all the water and stuff, because I know that's a big, big deal. Curb all the water runoff to the front. The house on the right will be elevated on a crawl space, port-crawl space. Both houses will be very, very well-built, a lot of nice, high-quality finishes inside. Everything, everything will be high efficiency, so energy costs are low. And that's pretty much the gist of it. I know that one drawback they had was that plans are the same, but that's an issue. We can certainly change one of the house plans, but we plan on doing, utilizing brick and stone, different colors, to differentiate the two. Like I said, one will have a basement, so the elevations will look much different than the one on the right, so that'll help a lot. One will have a three-car garage, one will have a two-car garage.
Okay. And did you state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm John Bradford.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Bradford? All right. Thank you, Mr. Bradford.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, I'd like to state this is a public hearing. If there's anyone in attendance who'd like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to the application, now is your time. We got all these wonderful people out here from Smyrna, and nobody wants to come talk. Come on. Yeah, absolutely. You come forward, state your name and address for the record. It's now or never on this one.
I know. I'm Jeannie Hollyfield. I live on Dunn Street, two houses up from the location.
Street number?
3126, on the corner of Legion and Dunn. Is Larry Wilson here? I'm just, I want to comment, this is ironic. His mom, Ruby Wilson, lived in that little house for a long time, and I used to visit with her, and she passed on last year, I think at the age of 96. And when I would chat with her, she would tell me stories. And she said that when her husband built that house she lived in, a Smyrna councilman would not allow him to build the house close to the road, and I wondered how close these were to the road, because he thought it was too tacky. And so, she was, they were forced to build the house way back up on the hill back there. So, they had this huge, you know, lawn. And so, I'm sure the, Mr. Bradford, they're gonna build beautiful homes, but I just, I'm sorry, this is so ironic, I had to comment on it.
Gotcha.
Finally, houses are coming down to the street and are being allowed to, so. Ruby, I hope you're checking this out. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for your comments. All right. At this time, we'd like to entertain a motion.
Your microphone's on the right button under the monitor. I'm sorry. Chair, you should share. Get it?
Motion to move.
Got a motion to approve. Ms. Harrington?
Second.
A second, Ms. Lightfoot? Please vote. The application's approved, 7-0, Mr. Bradford. Good luck to your family. All right. Next item on the agenda is zoning request, Z16-003. It's rezoning from light industrial to RAD conditional for one single-family residence. It's a .25 acres at land lot 594. This is 26, I'm sorry, 2963 and 2965 Elizabeth Street, and the applicant's Greg Williams. Mr. Martin, the background, please.
Good evening. This zoning case, we heard by y'all tonight, you'll make a recommendation to Mayor and Council for approval or denial. Mayor and Council make the final action on the rezoning request at the April 18th meeting. As you stated, these properties are located at the southern end of Elizabeth Street, basically at its terminus. The property is approximately a quarter acre in size. There is one single-family residence on the property, and the applicant is proposing to consolidate the two lots, tear down the existing home, and build a new home on that The zoning for the property is light industrial. It's highlighted in purple on the screen up there. The adjoining properties to the north and to the east are zoned R15, and the adjoining properties to the west and south are zoned light industrial. If this rezoning were to pass tonight, the properties to the south and west will be the remaining two LI properties on Elizabeth Street. This is the future development map. As you can see, the applicant is not proposing a change to the future land use map. It'll remain moderate-density residential. The one lot is below the 4.5 units per acre, that is the cap for moderate-density residential. And as you can see, all the adjoining properties to this are all moderate-density residential. Here's the proposed site plan for the development of the lot. He is requesting a variance on the front setback from 35 feet down to 15. This variance is necessary to be able to pull the house out of the 50-foot, city's 50-foot undisturbed stream buffer. There's a stream that runs along the north side of the property, along the north property line, and I'll represent this in the next slide for you. But, that's the basis for the requested front setback variance. He's maintaining a 10-foot side setback, which meets code, and he'll maintain a 30-foot rear setback, which meets code for the RAD zoning classification. He is requesting encroachment into, as part of another variance, he is requesting encroachment into the city's 25-foot impervious surface area setback from the city's stream buffer. The state's 25-undisturbed buffer is highlighted on the screen for you, so you can see where it is in relationship to the site and to the house. The city's 50-foot undisturbed buffer is next, and that almost backs up to the backside of the house, so he won't be allowed to do any disturbance, any earthwork, or anything within that undisturbed buffer. And finally, the 25-foot impervious surface area setback from the stream buffer. The orange portion of the house is showing you the encroachment into that buffer and what that square footage is. That is 924 square feet. The green portions that are highlighted are the areas that he is going to compensate for that 924, so he's gonna preserve these areas in exchange for that encroachment. And that green area comes out to be 1,481 feet. So, he's preserving more than he's encroaching. From a process standpoint, we would handle that through the plating process, where we delineate that that area is now part of the impervious surface area setback, and no building or any kind of hard areas can be constructed in those areas. These are some examples of the home idea that he has for the lot, some of the architecture that he's proposing. Here's the existing house. I do believe it's vacant. I didn't see anybody there when I went and took the picture, but I don't know that for sure he'd be able to answer that for you. These are pictures of the adjacent properties. The top left is the adjoining property to the west. Top right is the adjoining property to the north. Lower left is a picture of the adjoining property to the east, which is the utility site. I think it's Charter Communications Site. And then, the lower right-hand corner is the adjoining property to the south. Community Development recommends approval of the subject property from LI to RAD conditional for one single-family home at a density of four units per acre with the following conditions. I'm not gonna go through all the standard conditions. I have them listed out here for you. The standard conditions relate to the composition of the homes, the stormwater management for the site, underground utilities, traffic improvements, burying of debris, tree ordinance, landscape plans, and landscape requirements. Special conditions, the development shall maintain the following minimum setbacks, and this is a front setback 15 feet, a side of 10, and a rear of 30. The home shall have a minimum floor area of 1,800 square feet. The new proposed home shall not exceed two stories in height. The next one is the mitigation of the 924-square-foot encroachment into the 25-foot impervious surface area setback must be provided at a ratio of 1 to 1 elsewhere on-site along the same stream. A separate mitigation site plan must be submitted for approval prior to the issuance of a land disturbance permit or building permit. The next stipulation is approval of the subject property shall be conditioned upon the site plan submitted. And the final condition is the applicant shall be bound to the home elevations submitted with the rezoning application. With that, I'll be happy to answer any of your questions.
Just a quick one. The, I'm not sure about the easement going through that house. How did y'all address that? Is that also gonna be addressed during the planning, the plating phase?
We're gonna need, talking with Public Works Director, we're still unclear whether or not that's a private or public easement. If it's a private easement, he's gonna have to work out how to negotiate that house, whether that be acquiring an easement on the property to the north to be able to get the driveway around the corner of that house. But, that'll be left up to him, how to figure that out. Either way, whether it's public or private easement, I think he's gonna have to negotiate that for either option.
Will that be an issue that holds him up from acquiring a permit to start construction?
Yes. I think we'd want those easements in place prior to issuing a building permit.
Okay. Any other questions from Mr. Martin? Good job, Rusty. Thank you. At this time, we'd like to ask the applicant to come forward and tell us a little bit about your project. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. My name is Greg Williams, and I was asked to design a home for this property by the owner, and subsequently have applied for the variances and rezoning to make that happen. As Mr. Martin stated, we'd like to combine the two small lots into one more usable, more buildable lot, and create one new home, and keep the house as far away from the stream buffer as possible, and that's why we're requesting the setback variance from the easement in the front, which is on the original legal descriptions of the property, that easement is called Elizabeth Street Extension. So, I don't know, as Rusty said, whether that's a public or private, but we will take care of obtaining the necessary easement to accommodate the driveway, and as a condition of the permit application, obviously. I would point out that there's actually more green area that's not shown, in addition to the 1,400 square feet. I just didn't highlight all of the front yard area that can also be added to that number, as well as part of the easement that will be preserved as green space, impervious or pervious area. And the elevations that showed the two architectural types, we haven't settled on the final one, but it'll be very similar to those. We would like to perhaps, and the site plan shows it as a three-car garage, the two artist's renderings showed it as a two-car garage, so if it's possible to do a three-car within the same footprint still, we'd like to do that. If not, that's not a deal breaker.
Any questions, Mr. Williams? So, the only question I have is, it is a custom-designed home to fit on this, in this footprint, correct?
Yes.
So, when you actually submit your final plans, they will be what was intended for this space?
Yes. They will fit that footprint or smaller.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Nope. All right.
The house will be about 2,000 to 2,200 square feet total.
Okay. Very good. What's the foundation?
It'll either be cross, probably most likely crawl space or slab, but probably crawl space.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much for your time. All right. At this time, I'd like to open the floor. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application, come now. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Keith Bentley. I live on Gilbert Street and Williams Park. And I think in general, the neighborhood's in favor of this rezoning, obviously, from light industrial to residential. I think it's kind of a, it's been kind of a trouble spot from time to time with those two more or less abandoned houses out there. I guess I just had a couple of questions and concerns, though. I mean, it is a very narrow street, and there's some other homes on that street. It's one-way, dead-end. So, during the construction of the house, I think there'd be some concerns that the trucks don't impede the traffic, of people being able to get in and out of their houses closer to it. The other thing is, just a question, the rest of that property around there stays light industrial? Could anybody really build a light industrial thing right next to this house?
That's a good question. Mr. Martin, you wanna weigh in?
I mean, I think that's gonna be left up to the market to decide that, but at this point, no one's wanted to do it. So, I don't think the area is conducive to light industrial, so I don't think it'll happen. But, you know, the zoning is the zoning at this point.
We have to share mics tonight. Sorry about that. Can y'all hear me? By the end of 2017, we will have completed an update on our comprehensive plan, Mr. Bentley. Part of that will include the future land use plan and any corresponding zoning issues to that. So, that, basically, the last several months, we've been taking notes as to areas that we feel like need to go back, and when we do the big update, there's certain areas we definitely want to go back and take a look at, and this would be one of those. So, it may get changed in the future. I don't think we have any plans, since we have that coming up within, you know, a year to 18 months. Can y'all hear me? By the end of 2017, we will have completed an update on our comprehensive plan, Mr. Bentley. Part of that will include the future land use plan and any corresponding zoning issues to that, so that, basically, the last several months, we've been taking notes as to areas that we feel like need to go back, and when we do the big update, there's certain areas we definitely want to go back and take a look at, and this would be one of those. So it may get changed in the future. I don't think we have any plans, since we have that coming up within, you know, a year to 18 months. I don't think we'll handle it as a separate thing, we would just handle it as part of the study.
And what was the timing on that again?
It'll get started after July 1st. Our funding for the plan won't be available till July 1st of this year. It has to be completed and submitted to the state through Atlanta Regional Commission by August of 17, so that they can review and get it back to us for final approval in October of 17.
And just to clarify, what I was trying to explain was, the site's under a quarter of an acre in size, so it may not be conducive to, when you start putting the zoning regulations for LI onto the property, that it's even buildable, or being able to be occupied by light industrial use.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley. Any other comments, or concerns, questions? Come on. Good evening and welcome. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hi there.
Hi.
I'm Jack Lambert-Mont, I live at 2947 Elizabeth Street, so directly across the creek. I've spoken to Mr. Williams, and I do not have any broad concerns about construction of residential property on that. I think consolidating the lots and making them usable is a benefit to the neighborhood. My only question is the placement of the house within the setbacks and the variances that they're requesting. If there is a way to do it, and this is purely selfish, but our house is directly across that stream, our backyard is directly across that stream, it slopes down to the stream and then to our yard. So if there were a way to place the home on the property so that it would not look directly out back and into our yard, if there was a different way to set it on the property, we would appreciate consideration given to that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right. Any other discussion? Okay. At this time, we'd like to entertain a motion.
I make a motion to accept the Z16-003 rezoning from light industrial LI to RAD conditional for one single-family residence on landlot 394, sorry, 594, at 2963 and 2965 Elizabeth Street.
It's a motion to approve, Mr. Roberts, a second?
A second.
Second, Mr. Campo. The motion's approved, 7-0. Thank you all for your time.
Just as a follow-up comment to the last gentleman's issue about the view, yes, I would encourage you to work with Mr. Williams on that, because that was requested. Staff's going to take the approach that if you're changing a little bit on that lot, on that, that we feel like we have that flexibility to handle that internally. So it's really tough to make that a condition without having it already 100% cited to that. So I wasn't, that's why I didn't step in and say we ought to make a condition, but I hear what you're saying, so that if you all do work something out, I think we can handle that administratively.
Thank you, Mr. Sudrath. All right. Without any further business, the last item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the February 8th, 2016 Planning and Zoning Meeting. Motion to approve the minutes. Ms. Lightfoot, second?
I second.
Second, Ms. Harrington. All in favor? The minutes are approved, 7-0. And anything further, Mr. Sudrath?
This is just a personnel issue. Not that you all had a lot of interaction with our code compliance department, but some of you may have known one of the marshals, Melanie Fouts, and Melanie took early retirement. Her last day was a week ago Friday, and so we're in the process of replacing her, but Melanie was with us for a little over 16 years. So she felt it was time for family and personal reasons to move into another chapter of her life. So I wanted you all to know and to officially put it on record that we wish her the best.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sudrath. Mr. Martin? Mr. Staubes, nobody? All right. This meeting's adjourned at 6:35. Louder than a stapler.